The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, November 22, 2016. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Let us pray. Thank you Heavenly Father Jesus for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you Heavenly Father Jesus that we can come to you tonight and ask that you be with our city. Many are hurting in this city tonight Heavenly Father. Many things have happened, but we know that you all have it under control. You have everything under control. We know that. We feel that. We appreciate that. But tonight Heavenly Father Jesus, we just ask that you be with our leaders. Be with our council, our mayor. Be with our staff. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we just ask us, as Janine departs from us, that you just put an angel around her and just reassure her Heavenly Father Jesus that you have this and everything else under control. We certainly know that Heavenly Father Jesus, when it comes to leaders, that you place them in office, and we know Heavenly Father Jesus, that you've given us the leadership that we need. This city is going forth, and we just ask that you bless it. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus, in this holiday season, that the people never really forget the real reason for the season. And Heavenly Father Jesus, tonight, let us give you thanks as this city welcomes a new city manager, and we just pray Heavenly Father for him, for his family, that Heavenly Father Jesus, that you'll give him the strength, the wisdom, the leadership that this city needs, that we might go forth. We thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority member LeAnn Jones-Cruz?
Here.
Council Authority member Cal Campbell is absent. Council Authority member Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here.
Agenda changes for tonight, there will be some. The first item that we will talk about right after conflict of interest will be item 6.1, followed by presentations, and then we'll continue on with public comments after the Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
Member, I have a com-- mayor, I have a conflict of interest with item 6.2, and will be recusing myself at that time.
Thank you. Any further conflict of interest? Saying none, we're going to go proceed with item 6.1, under new business, a resolution approving the appointment of Sean Scully from the city as the city manager and approving the related employment agreement.
Mayor and council, what I have-- what you have before you tonight is a resolution approving the appointment of Sean Scully as the new city manager, and this would be approving his employment agreement. We've conducted a fairly-- a very thorough search and had several excellent applicants for the position of city manager, and the city has conducted extensive interviews and background checks in going through this process. By unanimous decision, the city council directed us to negotiate with Sean towards a contract, and what you have before you tonight is a reflection of those discussions. You know, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions or discussions on this contract?
Not for me.
Is there any discussion or comment from the public? Saying none, I bring it back to the city council for a recommendation and/or action.
I'll move that we approve item 6.1. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to approve and a second on item 6.1.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones-Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
All right, now we move to--
Mayor, if I could just for one second, take the liberty of giving the new city manager the opportunity just to address the council real quickly?
Sure. That's fine with me. Was that on the agenda?
Part of the item.
Thank you and good evening, council. Just very briefly, wanted to thank you for the opportunity. You know, we've had the opportunity to get to know each other just a little bit throughout the process. You know, it's very rare in this business to get the opportunity to compete for a position that you've wanted from far before you ever were qualified to have it. And so, it was a real treat for me to get-- go through the process with you, and I've got to know your staff a little bit in the interim. The hardest part for me at this point is going to be, you know, the 30 or 40 days that I have to wait before I step foot in the office, but, you know, we're going to get some stuff done before then. So, looking forward to be part of your community and getting to know, you know, your stakeholders and yourselves more. And just again, thank you for the opportunity, and I think this is going to be a good next couple of years, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. All right. Now, we're going to go to item 1.1 on the agenda, which is, oh, presentation to you, Janine. No? I'm going back to 1.1.
Did you listen to what I said?
I did. I thought you were taking the sixes out of order.
Okay. Okay. Janine, I invite you down, if you will, in front of a microphone that does not appear to be on.
Maybe we don't need it.
Maybe we don't. No, no. No, I had very kind words for you, but then your comment up there before--
I canceled it all. I'm sorry.
Janine, you came to us in 2011 after a special election, and tonight we say goodbye to you, although you have still one more meeting. You know, Janine came to us believing that politics can solve many of the huge problems throughout the world and even in this city. You know, things like universal health care, you know, feral cats, and we'll talk about that one later. But the way you do that is by breaking down the word "politics," which is a Latin word, break it down into its simplic-- simplicity, like "polly." Polly meaning--
Many.
Many. And ticks are those blood-sucking insects-- --that have no use whatsoever. So, that's what politics is to Janine.
Was I wrong?
No. I didn't say you were wrong. All right. Here I am, having difficulties with a little clicker. What other way? There's only four buttons.
Your other way.
There you go. All right, here's Janine on a bad hair day, as you can see. And, yeah, never. Janine, you-- we went-- we tried getting dirt on you. We truly did. She has no dirt on her. She has no dirt whatsoever.
You had to work long and hard, I'm sure.
Yeah, and see, that's the dirt I have. There we go. When Janine came to us, the first thing happened, that she got sworn in, before she could eat the cake, we went into closed session, correct?
Yeah, we did.
We did. And the decision that we made that night really questioned-- made me question whether or not she was truly using all of her talents. I think she was. But, something good came out of that, okay? Although the Lord-- Right after you made that decision, Osama bin Laden was captured. Wasn't that great? Look at that. You have Osama, Obama, O'Brien, all on the same page of the Bedesko P. I know. I know. Somebody click this one.
I hear you.
Janine thought coming to the city council would springboard her to, you know, greater political ambitions, but as she's here at a younger council, she soon realized, being in politics in Riverbank, the springboard is usually too obscurity or obsolescence. Next one, please. Oh, yes. She has the personal traits to be on the city council, right? You do. That of low esteem. She truly believes that democracy is the process in which people choose those they can blame. I asked her-- Go, go to the next one. Yeah. Here's the dirt that we got on you, and that was just what you shoveled. That's the only thing that we got on you. Okay. Next one, I think, is--
That fit so well, too.
Oh, it did. It did. And it messed up that hair. No, it didn't. Okay. I'm not going to bring this-- make this very long, but Janine has very proud to be a grandparent.
I am.
And she loves those grandchildren. And I asked her, what do you want your grandchildren to remember you by in 50 years? Is it your honesty? Is it your integrity? She says, no. In 50 years from now, I want my grandkids to say, Grandma still is hot.
I'm sure that's going to be the top of their list.
So, and Janine has really been truly outstanding on the dais, and I truly appreciated you. I really do, throughout.
It's mutual.
Well, the only problem is she had a 17-minute meeting when I was gone, and I have not been able to meet that. So, but this is in truly how I feel and how this council feels about you. And great appreciation to Vice Mayor Janine Tucker for her leadership that inspired all to envision greater possibilities for Riverbank now and in the future. As an innovative thinker and a valued mentor to the city council, she played a vital part in the planning and acceptance of projects that will only be realized long after her departure. Always concerned and proactive, she has left a positive impact on the staff and the public. It was a great honor having her lead the city of Riverbank.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much.
There you go. Oh, we got a picture of you. Yeah, this one we will be able to capture. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Now--
Can I say a word?
Yeah, you can say a word, but there's some other things that we have for you. But go ahead.
Oh, oh. Is it appropriate?
No, no, you can go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's been a distinct honor, privilege, to serve all the citizens of Riverbank this past five and a half years. It's been a fantastic experience. I have misgivings about leaving this position now. As many of you know, I'm dealing with a serious health concern, which has caused me to take a step back, take a break from my work that I value so much, from my work here at the city council that I value so much. But I'll be back in some capacity eventually, and just have to focus, you know, we all have to do that once in a while, take time to just focus on our health and what's most important and getting well. And so, that's what my focus is right now. But I, you know, I would say I love each and every one of you in this room, and I do. As corny as that sounds, it's absolutely true. And I have really enjoyed, more than I can possibly tell you, working with all of these people up here on the city council. They are absolutely dedicated to this city, as are all of our city administration personnel, all of our city staff. It's a tremendous city, and I know that I leave it in great hands. So, thank you so much for allowing me to serve you in this way. Thank you.
And I-- we were talking about the cats, and one thing we haven't able to do is solve the cat. For council member Janine Tucker, for six years of contributing to the feral cat solution, where one plus one plus seven years equals 370,092 kittens. Wow. So, with that, oh, I also have another gift to go along with that.
Should I open it now?
You should open it.
Okay.
No, this is a serio-- this is really serious for me.
I work hard so my city cats can live a better life. Yes! Cats rule! We couldn't find the muffin. I'm sorry.
Oh, you couldn't find the muffin? Oh, darn. Oh, I wanted a cat face.
Oh, little whiskers?
Yeah. Okay. Anyway. Anybody else have anything to say about?
Oh.
Mayor Tucker, on behalf of the city staff, particularly the administration department, that have had the pleasure of working with you all these five and a half-plus years--
That's gorgeous.
--we present to you a photo of the council, as well as your nameplate--
Oh, thank you.
--in honor of all the great work and dedication that you have given to our city.
Oh, thank you so much. That's beautiful. I will treasure it always.
Yeah, we don't do the ceiling white that way.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right. At this point, I would have invited the city manager to say something, but he already has. So, what I would like to do here is take a break, and so everyone can enjoy. Please meet the city manager, and say goodbye to Vice Mayor Janine Tucker. Thank you.
Thank you.
And donate the stuff. There are-- most of them have been in hard times one time or another. They know what it's like, and they don't have a whole lot, but they donate. And it just, you see them, and you just wonder, man, they're really doing something nice. So, anyhow, that. And then, coming up, we have the Riverbank Cares, which is at the community center the Friday before Christmas. And it's, again, a joint effort with a number of different groups, service clubs and the churches, to provide food for the-- their Christmas. And this year, it's pretty close to Christmas Day, so they won't have probably eaten it before Christmas. So, that's a nice thing, too. The only other thing I had is when the minutes-- I'm not sure if this is the right time, but the minutes said that I-- that the budget was balanced and attributed to me, and I didn't say that. So, I wanted that cleared up.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Anthony McKinney, resident of Riverbank. First things on the-- I want to talk about today is a great job with the lighting, as far as here on downtown. I'm sure it's going to proceed down a little further since the island's going down a little further. Next thing we've been asking about quite often is those signs that say that mediums not being watered due to drought. I believe if we're going to advertise it, we need to advertise it throughout the city and not just down here on Third Street here in downtown Riverbank. We have a crossroads areas, too, that has a medium, and if we're going to put a sign up that says not being watered, then that means the whole city of Riverbank's not being watered, not just part of it. Another thing we brought up during a BID meeting is that the city's businesses could possibly use our attorney services pro bono. I don't think that's a good idea. Matter of fact, I know it's not. We, as city citizens, pay for that legal services, and unless we approve that it can be farmed out and such, we need to postpone on that. Mezural looks like it's going to pass, and one of the stipulations of it is that we have someone on that committee, on an oversight committee. We would like to know when that selection's going to happen, where it's going to take place, and we would like to represent Riverbank on that council, because one of the things is to make sure that we do get our share of that money, since we are all going to be paying it for the next 25 years. Another thing is our budget. Our councils, our committees that were established here and that we are part of, planning and the budget oversight are not being utilized properly, nor efficiently, nor actively enough for us to maintain whatever transparency that we claim that we were going to give to our citizens, because a lot of things are coming across, once I said before, through a lot of-- through a lot of unscheduled, because it's not normal, meetings with the city council that exclude our oversight, and those things are being acted on without the community actually having involvement on it. And that was part of us, the city, putting that together. As far as revitalization, that would be part of our city revitalization. In order for us to attract other cities or developers to our city, we need to clean it up. I mean, we, you know, downtown looks great now, but this is part of the season, and we need to do it throughout the year. We have a medium there. It really doesn't take a lot for us to clean out the dirt, and we could use some bark from the park if we have to, but we need to show that it's not a desert there. When you cross over the tracks, all of a sudden, it appears you're in a twilight zone. And if all of Riverbank is supposed to be the same, and there's no diversity within it, then we need to reflect that in the way our community looks. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Saying none, I bring it back to the council. Would you like to comment on the subjects brought up?
Yes. Mayor, I do have comments with regards to Mr. Williams' request with assistance on the installation of a new well or connecting to city water. Some of what we were able to review in terms of options that we would have would be only available to the property owner. And so, at this time, we would need for the property owner to make contact with the city in order to begin discussions on any possible either deferral of fees or waiver of fee
I don't know what committee has oversight of the council. There are none. That was a little erroneous, I believe, or misguided.
Can I have a clarification from what a BID is for public comment? I mean, no, for public-- for public documentation, can we clarify BIDs for all the folks that are listening?
It is a business improvement district.
And I wasn't aware we had one established yet, so I was a little confused about some comments, too.
We have none.
I just wanted that clarified.
I had the same question, actually. Appreciate that.
I wasn't aware we had a BID.
There was some confusion in the delivery. Moving on to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of November 8, 2016, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Item 3B1, approval of November 14, 2016, special city-- Item 3B1, approval of November 14th, 2016 Special City Council Minutes. I believe that there was a correction requested. Okay. Is there any besides that, is there any other comments on the minutes? Or any other public comments on the consent calendar? Say none and bring it back to the city council for a recommendation and/or approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar with the necessary corrections.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second with corrections to the minutes.
Council authority member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Proceeding to item 6.2, a resolution approving the appointment of Maricela H. Garcia as Assistant City Manager and approving the related employment agreement.
I'll be recusing myself at this moment.
Thank you. Mr. White, it's yours.
Mayor and Council, what you have before you is a resolution approving the appointment of Maricela Garcia as Assistant City Manager. This would be a new position that would be created and it would be followed with, should you approve the contract, an ordinance that would be implementing. pursuant to the terms of the contract, it would not take effect until the ordinance takes effect. So we're looking at approximately about two months from now when this might actually have full effect. It was part of the city's kind of vision for moving moving the city forward and creating a leadership team. And and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We went through this and I believe it looks like the way that we discussed it. Is there any comments or questions?
Nothing from me.
Any public comment on this item?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Once again, my name is Anthony McKinney. As I disclosed before, I don't believe it's, matter of fact, I know it's not a part of our strategic plan. And to add it into, once again, bypassing our strategic planning process, this again was overlooked because I don't, we never needed an assistant to start with. And we haven't had one before. And I don't see the need for one now. And when the last city mayor left, it was, I mean, mayor, I'm sorry, city manager left, it wasn't due to not being able to perform duties. It had nothing to do with that. So I don't see where now we're bringing that extra cost or burden into our administration here. Once again, like I said, I believe I speak for a majority of the citizens here as well as in District Two, that I don't think this this should be relooked at again. Because we have it, it's sort of confusing. One, we're saying we're writing a position for someone. Another area, we say we're just writing a position because we need it. There's no competing in it. I don't know how it falls with the EEOC regulations as far as someone writing their own job description, pretty much. So until we look into that deeply, I'm sure you guys are going to make the decision that you that you feel best for the city. I'm not for it. Thanks again.
Any other public comment on this item? Bring it back to the council for discussion. I'd like to make a couple of comments. Us guys up here believe that there are a lot of vacancies in this city that are being handled by one individual. Before Ms. Anderson left, they were being handled by Ms. Garcia. And she's still handling those items once the new city manager comes in. Items you have missing is a planning director. Items you have missing is a economic development, which she's handling. And now the ones that she is handling is human resources with an assistant or with a human resource tech. She's handling those without any additional pay, but she has additional burdens. Many of those she hasn't been compensated for. Saving the city a great amount of money by not hiring others that she is doing the job superbly to allow the city manager to do the city manager's job. So on that, we commend her for what she has done in the past. This is something that was envisioned by the last city manager. And I believe we all approve it right now, but we'll see on the vote. Any other comments?
Just that it's something that's been under discussion for some time.
It has been.
And it is part of this, you said, the the vision for the city going forward. It has been under discussion for some time.
And it does follow under the strategic plan. It's been something that's discussed. You can look it up in the minutes. Part of the strategic plan. And that's a public document on the website if you'd like to take a look at it.
Any other further discussion? May I have a recommendation and/or action?
I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the resolution approving the appointment of Maricela Garcia as Assistant City Manager.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.2 in a second.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. We move to item 7.1 with your staff comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Recently, the city of Riverbank lost a member of its staff and family. We send our condolences out to the family of Tim Doughty, who provided 15 years of exceptional service to the city of Riverbank. We wish his family well during this time. Also, we'd like to thank Vice Mayor Tucker for all of her professionalism and all of her wisdom that she provided as she was on council. The staff really appreciates all of the work that you have done. Also, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to welcome our new city manager, Sean Scully, to to our team. We look forward to working with you. And we look forward to seeing what color you'll be picking for your office because we're ready to say goodbye to the pink.
Yeah, I like pink.
I'd also like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And then we'll have Sue, who has staff comments?
Just a sec, yes, sir. It'll be discussed later. I mean, I would like that. But it still has a long process to go. We have two more months to go.
Thank you.
Item 6.2 was approved.
Well, thank you very much for the vote of confidence that this city council has placed in me.
Well deserved.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd just like to remind everyone that the Christmas parade is going to be this Saturday. And the craft fair will be starting at noon. We have a lot of vendors scheduled to come downtown and Christmas music. And then the parade will start at 5:30. And immediately after, we'll light up the tree, which is, the guys have been working really hard on. The tree has grown so tall that now they had to rent a lift or borrow a lift. Luckily, we didn't have to pay much for it. So anyway, right after that, Santa Claus will come and we'll have pictures with Santa and hot chocolate and all that fun stuff. So hopefully everyone will come down and the weather looks like it's going to hold out. So we'll see you there.
Staff comments from Michael?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I'm pleased to inform you that we have been in contact with Pacific Gas and Electric and they have informed us that they are going to come in and change out their streetlights to the LEDs. 385 streetlights will be changed out there anticipating starting mid-December. And I would assume if we do get a mid-December start, we should be done probably by mid-January, end of January latest type thing. We we were able to take a look at the inventory and we were able to pick and choose if we wanted to up the wattage and this kind of stuff. So we have done that and I have corresponded with PG&E with that information. So we should be set to jet.
And finally, staff comments from Donna.
Good evening. Please excuse my voice, I have a cold. I would just like to share with the council how thankful and appreciative I am of the citizens of Riverbank. I have been a planner for 15 years and I have worked for a total of five cities. And I have never had the connection with the citizens that I have had with the city of Riverbank. As you know, or some of you may know, I do go out and collect illegal signage every so often. And there have been several occasions where, well, when I go to pull an illegal sign, I find a safe place to park the city car, put the flashers on and do what I need to do. And I've had several times where gentlemen have stopped their vehicles to see if I needed assistance with the city car, like if I'm broken down. And the last time I went out, I was on Crawford Road removing green ribbons that were probably about a year old and had a vehicle drive by, roll down their windows and at least two people screamed, "Thank you," as they went by. And that's never happened to me in other cities. And we've got a great group of people, a great group of citizens. And I just want you to know how appreciative I am of them. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Mayor, we have some final comments from our city clerk, Annabelle Aguilar.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to let everyone know that I have not, as your election official, I have not received the official results of the election for District Two. So I anticipate that the reorganization of the city council and the swearing in will occur in the regular meeting of December 13th. So I just wanted everyone to know. Hopefully, they will be able to join us in the swearing in on December 13th. Thank you.
What is the deadline that the?
December 6th.
That's it?
That's all for staff comments.
For council authority members, Council member Jones Cruz.
I just wanted to welcome Sean Scully and his wife this evening to our council meeting. Looking forward to working with you and happy you'll be joining our team. So thanks for being here tonight. I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. Make sure you're safe and enjoy the holiday with your friends and family. And Sue shared my last comment about the parade. And hope to see you all down there for the parade and craft fair this weekend. Thank you.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
I attended the webinar for the Adult Use of Marijuana Act Prop 64 and Local Taxation that was approved on 11/8. You know, that it was a statewide ballot. And it was presented by the League of California Cities. And some of the key takeaways I'd like to just throw out there for information is that a city or county that that bans cultivation, including outside personal cultivation or the retail sale of marijuana, is not eligible for any grants. Those grants could be to help us for education, for actually for anything that we, you know, may need help with. And then also that we will have control, we will have local control over local taxes and fees on marijuana. Medical marijuana is exempt from any state and local sales tax. And then the key issues that we need to consider as a city is that we cannot ban indoor cultivation. And one of the questions that we have to think about is how do we monitor that? Because there could be potential fire hazards with the overuse of electricity, excess water usage, mold could build up, and there could be potential health hazards. Those are just some of the things that I want us to think about as we move forward because it is, you know, legal now. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Welcome, Mr. Sean, and looking forward to working with you. And see everybody at the parade. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tucker?
I'll just add my welcome to our wonderful new city manager. We're very excited to have you joining the city, even though I'm stepping down. And I'm so glad that your lovely wife could join us this evening as well. We appreciate you both being here this evening. And absolutely, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Remember the importance of being with family and and friends and what, you know, what the season's really all about. And have it in your heart to give because that's what's the most important thing this time of year. So happy Thanksgiving and hope to see everybody at the parade.
And shop where the cop is when? Where did the head cop go?
He had his ear to the dirt.
Just wanted to make sure I can do some. Oh, one of the things now that the election is over and we'll should have a decision on the 6th of December, no decision has been made yet, is that I'd like to schedule my annual summit probably in February. This summit is for nonprofits and for community-based organizations. And what I really want to hit on is how we are treating those who are homeless and how we can get them help without giving them a handout. There's a lot that are out there that need the help and that by giving them a handout does not do anything but perpetuate the desire to be homeless. And I'd like everyone that participates to come with ideas and reverse what you commonly believe is true about a homeless person. They say most of them want to be homeless. They don't. They want a handout. They don't. They want respect. They want self-esteem. So how do we give those to them? How do we get them the proper medical and the proper psychological help? And what is the best avenue and vehicle to do that? So what I would like to do is clean up from the homeless to make sure that we do not perpetuate the living along the river, the perpetuating those walking through, doing property crimes because there's not much people will do to them because they need something to eat. Feeding them is not what is what they really need. What they need is some type of a job, some type of, so let's get those ideas together. We'll put out, save a date, and then we'll come on up with the summit that I I truly missed this year. In that, I would also like to take a look at sometime in the first quarter under the new city manager, cats. It may seem funny, but colonies are supposed to get smaller, not larger. You're not supposed to have kittens with spayed and neutered cats. You're not supposed to have a proliferation of the animals in residential neighborhoods. Okay, so what we need to do is re-educate and enforce some type of, some method to enforcing, you know, a colony being safe, being healthy, being clean and sheltered from the elements. So that's something, Mr. Scully, you'll have the pleasure. Okay, with that, I'd just like to thank Ms. Tucker, you're not gone yet, but I still want to thank you for your tenure on the city council, almost six years in your leadership. And I want to welcome Mr. Scully to the city of Riverbank. And with that, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving. Watch out, the driving's getting worse out there, not in the city of Riverbank, but it's getting worse out there. And so please be safe and see you on Saturday.